Hi, everyone. Welcome. I'm Teresa Battaglia. I'm the Vice President of Continuous Learning for ASP Chicago. I'm also the Donor Relations Manager for the Archdiocese of Chicago. I just want to welcome and thank all of you for being here. I know that in these difficult times, it's extremely important for us to come together and to learn from one another and also to hear each other out and see what we can learn. We're bringing together representatives from three well-known consulting firms. We have Kelsey Nelson from Campbell &amp; Company, Sharon Tigness from the Alfred Group, and Doug London from CCS Fundraising. So they're going to go over with you and suggest some fundraising strategies that we can all use to keep our organizations going, as well as continuing to connect us with those who support and believe in our mission. Just a few things before we get started, some general housekeeping. All lines are muted for better quality. Please use your chat window for questions. Slides and recordings will be available after the meeting, and of course, we'll have an evaluation following today's presentation. So we are going to get this rolling with Kelsey, who's going to talk about donor communication.
All right. Can you hear me all right, Teresa?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be with you all today, and thanks to everyone on the webinar for joining us and for whatever Herculean efforts you're going through just to do your job these days. Our hope is to share some frameworks and advice with you today that might make it all a little bit easier. This past month has been a difficult one, but at least for me, it's also been filled with moments of intense gratitude for the collective creativity and heart that colleagues across the nonprofit sector are exhibiting. So at Campbell &amp; Company, we have a full-service communications team that works on messaging and donor-facing materials. And I'm not part of that team, but I do work closely with them. And my fundraising colleagues and I have been collaborating with them even more than usual over the past few weeks. So many of the questions coming to us from clients and friends right now are about how to communicate with donors. And there's a lot of overlap between fundraising and communication strategy. So I want to start just by summarizing some of the themes that arise from these conversations. Thank you. So what we're hearing: Questions about whether to move forward with business as usual. Lots of people want to know, if we generally send out a spring appeal or magazine or donor's report, do we press on or do we pull it and wait for a better time? There's also concern about people being inundated with emails and virtual messaging and meeting requests. There's a lot of virtual noise out there right now. It's almost like a month-long Giving Tuesday, and organizations are worried about being able to cut through it. On the flip side, many people are also wondering about the implications of sending mail, both because of the health risks of receiving an opening mail and, of course, those of warehouses that continue to operate for fulfillment and printing. Varying levels of comfort with technology is also causing concern. This is coming up with organizations thinking about transforming in-person events to virtual events, board meetings to web meetings, and even one-on-one donor visits to video conferences. There are concerns both that there will be glitches on the organization's side and that the systems will be too difficult or cumbersome for the donors to figure out. And we're hearing a lot of questions from organizations who aren't involved in immediate relief efforts as to whether it's even appropriate to communicate about their needs and mission in this moment. This is especially true for arts and culture institutions, many of whom are suffering greatly from earned revenue losses, but are anxious about sharing that while they see nonprofits like hospitals and food depositories on the so-called front lines of the fight. Overhollering would sum it up by saying there's a fear of being perceived as tone deaf. Organizations want to know how they should talk in this moment and what seems natural and appropriate. If you could go to the next slide? Thank you. So I want to share a few strategies that respond to those concerns. First of all, no communication should be just a crisis communication. Always connect the moment to your mission and message. By now, you've sent out the mass communications telling people about the immediate changes you had to make: closing your doors, moving to remote work, canceling events and programs. And it's time to move beyond communications that are solely about the crisis and make sure, as you usually do, that you're tying everything back to your mission. So you should be looking for ways to synthesize your normal messaging with what COVID-19 highlights about the importance of your work. In other words, how does your mission respond directly to problems the pandemic is intensifying? And I'll give you just one example of this. I work with a youth development organization in the city that teaches leadership skills through sport and play. They exist because under-resourced schools and communities do not have access to the same type of recreational opportunities and associated skill-building that well-resourced communities do. So these are the same communities that we're seeing disproportionately affected by COVID-19 because they're located far away from public transportation, they've worked access to healthcare, and in many cases, don't receive the training that residents need to gain the types of jobs that would allow them to work from home right now. So in this case, the leveling the playing field message that has always been a part of this organization's mission can be directly connected to the pandemic. It's just about finding that part of your mission that has always been there that seems more relevant in these times. Another rule of thumb is to try to strike a balance between alarmism, and I love this, what our Director of Communications calls "now more than ever"ism. Unless your organization is actually on the brink of collapse, you shouldn't be raising the alarm in an already high-stress time. At the same time, you don't want to just say what you were going to say and add "now more than ever." It's vague. It's not very compelling. So think about telling your donors, as succinctly as possible, how COVID-19 is impacting your organization, how you're responding, and what they can do to help. In other words, if you're a performing arts organization, the message shouldn't be, "We make great art, which is more important now than ever." It should be, "Here are the ways we're bringing art to you to help you get through these tough times. We hope you'll let us into your home and consider supporting us, so we'll be here to bring you joy and good times and in bad for years to come." Be candid, focused, and succinct. Keep it simple. Everyone is mentally and emotionally taxed right now. No one has the brains to base for high-concept messaging. This applies to you even if you're a research university or a medical association. Shorten and tighten whatever you're sending. Your donors will thank you. This is an okay time to ask for what you need. Usually, we would tell you that your case should be focused on the solution, not the problem, because people like to give to things they perceive to be winning efforts. But these are really extraordinary times, and right now, people want to know that for a cause they care about, there's something they can do to help. And I'll add one more thing here: Cut yourself some slack. Not every message needs to be beautifully written and produced. Just be honest and clear. Don't strive for perfection. If you have good news to share, do so. Just be sensitive. A lot of people can use a little bit of sunshine in their day. This could be a message about a donor stepping up with a meaningful gift or a short anecdote about the resilience of your community or creative ways you're responding to the crisis. So I heard a piece on NPR the other day about college newspaper editors that are continuing to run their publications while they're away from campus. And this struck me as a great example. You know, if you're college or university, sharing a story about how some of your student groups are continuing to support their fellow students even while they're not on campus. Give people a way to stay connected from home. These can be simple ways to show what your mission delivery looks like in the days of social distancing. So it can be an aquarium's animal care staff grading a penguin around the empty building or an Instagram story sharing an at-home activity for kids that's pulled and adapted from one of your programs. I read a post on Bluelay's nonprofit AF blog this week, which some of you might follow, that proposed a new idiom to replace "behind the scenes", and it was "skull below the fold," as in below the fold of a website. And I love this. I think it's really appropriate in these days when digital connection is all we have. And that takes me to my next point, which is that if you don't have a regular digital engagement calendar that includes weekly posts for your social channels and frequent emails, please develop one now. You probably have the time, and you really should have one anyway. So spend more time thinking about what you're putting out through email and through Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, Instagram than you have before. My last message here: Look at anything you'd already scheduled to send out and update it so you don't come off as tone deaf. You know, there could be things that you've already written. You don't have to rewrite them. Think about, you know, something as simple as putting an insert in a magazine or a direct mail piece that's going to go out to make sure that people know you're paying attention and you understand that these are different times. Thanks, Teresa. Okay, so finally, I'm not going to spend too long on this, but I encourage you to develop some headline messages for different audiences that you can share across your team. Ideally, this would be with all your staff, not just the fundraisers. And what I have on the screen are generic guidelines that should work for any organization, but the idea is that you could customize them to reflect your mission and value proposition. I'll go quickly through major donors, since you'll hear a lot more about major gift fundraising from Doug in just a moment. The key here is to remind your major donors that they're part of your inner circle. They share in your successes, and they can help you emerge from this challenge. Thank them. Be super transparent. It's more important to be in touch with them than it is to be polished. So share how you're hurting, how you're responding, when they can expect to hear from you, and remind them how great your team is. Tell them, you know, how folks across the organization are stepping up. And of course, reassure them that you're committed to the strategic priorities that they might have helped you to fund and do or to develop. With annual donors, you have a real chance to emphasize the necessity of unrestricted support to get you through times like these. Again, you want to make sure your communications aren't all about the crisis. Tie them back to your mission and why they love you in the first place. One more example here: I work with a college scholarship organization, and one of the key values they talk about in filling in their scholars is grit. So we're counseling them to really lean on messaging about grit and resilience right now. I don't think anybody knows what the full financial impact of COVID-19 will be on their organization yet, but any quantitative information you can share is helpful. So an example, you could say, you know, if you're a performing arts organization, ticket sales account for X percent of our annual budget. You know, we canceled many of our shows, so please consider donating the cost of a ticket to us this spring. And then the final category, broader audiences. This is kind of a false category because it's really several different categories. If you're an arts organization, this is probably divided into subscribers or members and visitors or single-ticket buyers. If you're an independent school, it might be parents, grandparents, and alumni. If you're a healthcare org, you might have group health patients. Anyway, think about all of those major audiences that you generally customize messaging for and develop some headlines that will be seen and how you keep them informed during this time. You want to, of course, invite them to engage with you through whatever virtual opportunities you have. And even more than usual, tell them how they can help. They might not be donors yet, but they're in your sphere, and they want to see you survive. Show them what others are doing to help and invite them to as well. So that same invitation to donate the cost of a ticket is a perfect example of how to engage non-donors in giving right now. And finally, if you think about this, what's on the screen as a messaging grid of sorts that you could develop, you might want to add a couple more rows. One could be a row talking about the frequency with which you're speaking to each audience, and another could list the vehicles, so, you know, e-blasts, social media, personal phone calls, texts, things like that. And with that, I'll pass to Doug and Sharon to chime in if you have anything to add.
Doug, were you going first? Or I will? I'll just offer... Kelsey, that was excellent. And I know everyone has great perspective on what you shared and how we can apply it. At the Alfred Group, one of our clients, who is a Chicago-based human service organization, literally on the front line and on the front pages, is hosting a 30-minute webinar inviting their volunteers, their donors, their social media audience to hear a 30-minute snapshot of how they've shifted and how they're addressing their work in our city. Doug, you might have some other thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. You know, Kelsey, thanks for that. I think there's a couple of things that jump out to me. One is, nothing about this time that we're living in is polished or clean, right? So just communicating is more important than having a very professionally-developed piece, an organization that we're working with. Also, a healthcare organization in Chicago is doing a daily video sent out to their constituents and then posted on their social media channels. And it literally is a 30-second video from a clinician or a member of the professional staff talking about what's going on and just, you know, providing a glimmer of hope to folks, but done on iPhones or some sort of mobile device. And it's been a really... They've been doing it for three weeks now, and it's just a great touch base for everyone to see real people in scrubs at the end of a long day telling you about their day. And it's been a great cultivation opportunity for their donors and for the community as well.
Yeah. And just one more thing I'm sure everyone is enjoying through our social media channels is the wonderful performances that people are making from their homes and connecting through different virtual platforms to do, you know, hallelujah with the piano and a cello, you know, just theater performances. It's just been wonderful to see the exciting new way of bringing art and joy and, you know, reviving the cultural experiences that helped to uplift us and to give us hope.
Thanks, Sharon and Kelsey, and thanks, everyone, for your time today. Excited to be with you, and I appreciate you joining us this afternoon. We know that challenging times offer an opportunity for organizations to strengthen and cement their relationships with their stakeholders, as well as to affirm their mission and demonstrate their relevance. And at CCS, we've learned through our experience in COVID-19 and in past times of crises that donors who stopped supporting significant nonprofits during or after a crisis did so primarily because they didn't feel connected. And much to what Kelsey shared, nonprofit organizations that stay the course, continue to keep their stakeholders engaged, will ultimately emerge successful from challenging periods like this. As we think about major gift fundraising, what do we know in this time of COVID-19? Individuals are still giving. Smaller gifts are more common, but people are still giving to organizations. There is opportunity that exists, opportunities to reaffirm mission and impact and remind donors of the impact of your work, the organization's work that you support. There's opportunities to be creative, to Kelsey's point, to virtually engage with donors, to serve as a level of inspiration and connection. And what I think is most important is to show empathy and concern for our stakeholders. At this moment, we are all impacted in some way by COVID-19, and if we can present as supportive and empathetic, it will be a successful relationship builder in the long run. Corporate and foundation philanthropy has ramped up, especially in response to the immediate needs of the vulnerable populations that many of the organizations that we know and love support. And as such, many foundations have made adjustments to their grant-making work in terms of loosening and eliminating restrictions on current or new grants, reducing what is asked of nonprofit partners, postponing reporting requirements, site visits, creating community-based emergency response funds and other efforts to address the health and economic impact on those affected. And so just as we think about, you know, directly and move through the slides on major gift, just wanted to lay this as a platform or a foundation to think about. On the next slide, you're already there. Thanks, Teresa. Although COVID-19 has drastically changed the way that we think about fundraising, these key tenets hold true. All aspects of major gift fundraising in this climate should directly relate to those tried and true basics that we all know by heart: Case, Leadership, Prospects, and Plan. As we think about case on the next slide, the case allows organizations to reaffirm their mission and continuously remind donors of the impact of its work. CCS would recommend, and much to Kelsey's point, creating a targeted case to respond to COVID-19, including why dollars are needed at this point and for what. It's also important to note that some organizations play a special role in this current public health crisis: food banks, social service organizations serving vulnerable populations, hospitals providing frontline care to those that are affected, schools that are providing scholarships or enhanced learning opportunities to students who might not otherwise be able to access it. Sharing these real and tangible stories in your case and in your messaging is extremely important. And if appropriate, share what's going on with your people, with your staff, with your volunteers, how they're being affected. It creates a real connection and important personal level of opportunity to see behind the curtain of an organization at this really unprecedented time. Leadership, I think, is one that really provides a great deal of opportunity. On the next slide, we're all working from home. You see a vantage point into all of our home offices as we speak to you today, but everyone we know is at home. And so it's a great opportunity to virtually engage with board members, volunteers, advocates in this work, whether it's by a Zoom or a GoToMeeting, by phone, or even by email. Staff have a unique role to play. You might consider encouraging the head of your organization, the CEO or the executive director, to make personal contact with their portfolio or the top 10, 15, 20 donors. And then perhaps the chief development officer or the development staff are reaching out to the next 20 to 30 donors. Can other staff call volunteers to do wellness checks? See how they're doing? Just serve as a resource and a sounding board at this time. Are there opportunities to send handwritten notes? I know that, you know, often the art of USPS mail is lost, but this is a great opportunity to send a handwritten note to let people know that you're thinking of them. Our boards also have an opportunity to be engaged and to engage. Communicating updates, calling a special board meeting or gathering, I love the example that Sharon shared about that 30-minute meeting that people are being gathered for to hear real-time updates. Being in consistent contact is important, but it's also an opportunity to utilize your board in a new way for fundraising and programmatic needs. Can board members call staff to say thank you? Can board members call donors or volunteers? Can they support social media efforts or solicit their friends for a near-term fundraising initiative like a crisis response fund? Could your board host a virtual parlor meeting? Is there an opportunity to engage a smaller set of people virtually to talk about the work that's being done? An arts and culture organization that we're working with on the East Coast had to cancel their annual gala this spring, like many of you, due to COVID-19. And on the board call while this decision was being made, the Director of Development had planted some seeds to a couple of key board members to announce some significant pledges that they would be making to the annual fund. And on that one call, they were able to secure $1 million towards their annual fund. And the gala usually accounts to 1.2 of that. And so while it was an unexpected win for the organization, they were able to recoup some of those funds. And we do know that events are questions that some of you have that we'll talk about in our Q&amp;A section as well. As we think about prospects, I would recommend, and CCS would recommend, prioritizing based on the highest yield and your best ROI. Now, to some, that means dollars. To others, that means awareness and engagement. And it's important, just like you would think about in your annual philanthropic calendar, that the approaches to each of these types of donors should be very bespoke. As Kelsey mentioned earlier, for mail and email appeals, these should look different than what you originally planned for. The case, the tone, perhaps the look should be reimagined. And potentially, the vehicle from which you send it might look different. So if you're sending it via email where you're used to sending this via USPS, there might be some messaging that needs to go along with that about the reason why. A health system that we're working with in Michigan has raised more than $10 million towards their COVID fund, including a number of seven-figure gifts, all via the internet. They have a 50% open rate, and they moved very swiftly in early days to establish key and consistent messaging in that now the multiple appeals that have gone out to their constituents are welcomed because the organization has been consistently communicating with them over this period of crisis. They also received a large shipment of masks from a trustee to their hospital. So, you know, while you might be really in need of funds to keep your annual fund and your annual operating moving forward, it's also important to recognize that there might be opportunities to engage or to secure some key in-kind gifts during this time as well. Another example that I think is really exciting is a Midwest-based organization that we're working with has created an online giving challenge titled Couch to Cure, encouraging benefactors to not only give philanthropically to support the lifesaving mission, but also post videos from their couch. We all are spending lots of time at various places in our home, and the dollars first, but connecting people with people in a time when we're all yearning for some connection has proven really successful for them. And they have a whole webpage on their website that allows people to share messages and stories with each other at this time. There's also opportunities to solicit major gifts. And when we think about how those major gifts can be positioned, is there an opportunity to have a challenge match or a matching gift? Likely, these would need to be key donors inside your organization that are close or what we would call low-hanging fruit. Most organizations have some of those people in their back pocket, but thinking about how you can use this moment in time to encourage a meaningful gift to help inspire others would be great. We spoke earlier about, and there's been some mentions of considering special briefing, so a series of teleconferences to brief stakeholders on issues pertinent to the situation. How is COVID affecting your organization? And donors are interested in being cultivated and learning about how the organization is responding, how your organization is responding. Are classes canceled? Have events been moved? Are services or performances being altered or canceled? Having access, just like you would normally offer to a key donor in time of the donor lifecycle. Providing access and early information is something that can go a long way in securing a long-term relationship with a donor. I mentioned earlier, planning virtual donor gatherings to share information and updates. An organization that we're working with has held a number of parlor meetings. They've asked board members and key donors to invite 10 of their friends to engage in update and solicitation conversations. The goal is full mission and full mission giving. And the second opportunity is to provide access to their restricted COVID fund if that is of interest to the donor. But these hosts of these parlor meetings are serving as challengers, so often challenge gifts to the people that give and attend during that time. As all of you know, corporations have really stepped up during this time, and you might consider tapping into corporate opportunities, given the level of their support recently, and also with both local and national foundations looking at special grant opportunities as it relates to COVID-19's and the response effort. Are areas that engaging additional prospects and new prospects might be advantageous to your organization. Sharon, on the next slide, we'll talk a bit about plan. And Sharon's going to talk about planning in a bit, but there's two main things I'd like to touch on. The first is really developing a short-term action plan, taking what Kelsey shared and thinking about how you're going to communicate with your donors over a period of time. Not only does a 30- or a 60-day action plan allow you to know what you're doing day-to-day, but it provides a sense of urgency. We're working with a local community college who said out loud to their constituents that there was a gap in counselor funding, so the funding to be able to provide their students direct access to counselors and scholarships. And they received a number of significant six-figure gifts because they just said it out loud. So thinking about how we can, in day-to-day and week-to-week, message and communicate that with your donors. Focusing on the stories, sharing stories. I mentioned earlier, the example of that local hospital that's posting examples from their clinicians, but thinking about how you can be impactful day-to-day and week-to-week. And most importantly, don't cancel your fundraising plans. Stick to your overall strategies, but recognize, without being tone-deaf, that there's an opportunity to make reasonable adjustments in your day-to-day meetings, in the events that you're holding. How can these events be held virtually or rescheduled? And be flexible, recognizing that one decision you make today might change next week. Consider extending timelines or goals, recognizing that as you move events or your annual fund appeal or different things that you had planned out, that if your fiscal year ends in June, that might change the landscape for the next couple of months. And as we think about additional considerations on the next slide and as I begin to wrap up, there's a lot of words on this slide, so I'll save it for... I'll allow you to read it when we send the deck later. But what I would take away from here is be in touch, utilize technology, show empathy, and really be knowledgeable in the current climate. Major gift fundraising and philanthropy overall continue to thrive at this time. And being in touch and not aborting the plans that you've so thoughtfully made will continue to serve you well, hopefully, long after COVID is behind us in the near term. And with that, Sharon or Kelsey, anything you'd like to add on or jump in with?
Sure, I'll jump in. Thank you so much, Doug. I think that's all really, really great, helpful advice. And I'm particularly appreciative that you started with the idea of, you know, if we approach our donors from a place of empathy and caring, we can't go wrong. And I think that, for me, ties in really nicely to the idea that major gift fundraising can continue. I think, you know, I've been working with some clients and then talking about what's really the right way to stay in touch with donors right now and, you know, talking to some people who are a little hesitant about, you know, continuing their gift conversations, particularly if they're in a campaign environment and it just doesn't seem... particularly if they're in a campaign environment and it just doesn't feel, it doesn't feel really important right now. And I think, you know, let's remember that we're all in the business of relationships, and, you know, we know our donors, we want to know how they're doing, so anything we can do to be in touch with them, ask them how they're doing. And if we want to, I think about it as a little bit of requalification. You know, our gift timetables are going to shift, for sure, but anything we can gather about them, it's obviously, you know, good to ask and good to know, and it will be helpful to us in the future. So dropping in a few of those questions, if you feel comfortable, and just making sure to stay in communication, I think is really great. So, thank you all.
Yeah, Doug, that was terrific. I certainly agree with what you and Kelsey have both just been saying. You know, what we have really encouraged our clients to realize is that we shouldn't say no for our prospects. We should ask them, you know, share with them, as has been presented both by Kelsey and Doug, where your organization is. Your needs don't change, whether you're a frontline organization or not. And presumably, what it is you're raising money for is as urgent today, if not more so than ever. So, you know, asking them, just candidly saying, you know, at what time would it be appropriate for us to have this conversation about a special gift to help our organization in this prescient time? And then I love the idea, Doug, of the caring calls. One of our clients, it's a faith-based organization, working in the healthcare environment as well, and, you know, realizing that not everybody has a smartphone, so they're not watching videos. They likely have a laptop or a computer where they're seeing emails, and they may be able to open a link, but they're not necessarily all on social media and seeing our stories. So I do think those caring calls that are being made, you know, our clients have seen great appreciation for that. It's interesting, just in our personal lives, we know that there are members of our families who don't have a smartphone, so they're not FaceTiming. So that personal call and, you know, letting them ask us questions about what's happening within our organization and how we're responding to the needs of our community is more important than ever. Okay, shall we move on then? So, as we were thinking with the AFP Chicago leadership about how we could respond to this town hall of the big questions, the big issues that we're all addressing, one that became clear that a lot falls into is keeping your organization whole as we're transitioning through COVID-19. And knowing that, in the end, on the other side, the world will likely be quite different. It may be that a lot will be the same, but there will be a lot that won't be the same. So, you know, as we think about what we need, what organizations like all of ours need to do to come strong through and to the other side of this, I want to offer to you three frameworks to think about. So on the next slide, you'll see a temperature, I want to ask you all to take a temperature check with me on your organization with regard to bold leadership, healthy teams, and interpersonal dynamics. Many of you who have participated in sessions or webinars at the Alfred Group and with me have heard me share my favorite quote from Alice's Adventures in Wonderland. Lewis Carroll so brilliantly writes, in response to the Cheshire Cat's response to Alice, "If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there." So this is certainly not a time when we want to be outside of a strategic planning framework. And, you know, we're all reading probably more these days, and a colleague shared with me a book that she just finished reading, Your Leadership Edge by Ed O'Malley and Amanda Sebula, who said, "Leadership isn't about the right answers, but it is about process." So as we think about leadership, I want to, as we look at the next slide, please, Teresa. You know, bold leadership demonstrates, is demonstrated not only by the executive director and CEO, perhaps your board chair, it's the leadership that we can all bring to our organizations. This is a time where everybody's ability to shine, everyone's ability to demonstrate innovation and clarity around how we can bring our mission forward and have the greatest impact matters more than ever. So while it's the leader's responsibility to articulate the direction and to lead the creation of a plan through this situation that we find ourselves in today, clearly we want to bring the team along through that process. So, you know, collecting information, sharing information, driving for results. I mean, we were acutely aware of how important it is, not only for the mission of our organization to have the greatest impact, but to share the greatest results and the impact that we're making in our work every day. So we must continue to drive for results during these times, even if it means there's certain elements of our organization who can pivot and work on a project that they've wished they had time for, but they didn't, but now they do. One organization that the Alfred Group is working with used this time to really advance their corporate partnership strategy. And just yesterday, the CEO said, you know, "I'm so excited that we finally have in place this approach that we can take," and especially at this moment where we are moving into a stronger environment with clarity around a new world that we're working in. It's so important for leaders to be decisive and to be truthful. Obviously, it's through that candor that organizations build trust, and this is an opportunity for every organization to grow stronger. And of course, everyone is innovating in everything that we do, but the leader's demonstration of innovation and our ability to pivot just will bring our organizations that much stronger. So as we go to the next slide and think about healthy teams, you know, I'm going to share with you a framework for a plan that one of our clients has adapted and is using and that we would encourage you all to. But every plan that we have, Kelsey talked about taking your communications plan, adding another row, you know, being clear about what your progress indicators may be. Doug shared the same idea of taking your major gifts plan or your campaign plan and right-sizing it to where you are. So for an organization to have a plan that shows how you're moving through this time and what we know, what we believe we can see in 30, 60, 90 days. So again, this is part of what keeps our team strong in this kind of a moment and actually makes us stronger than we might have been a month ago. I mean, two months ago, none of us imagined where we are today. Protecting your culture is so important in the way that we not only interact with each other, but with our colleagues, with our partners, with our donors, with our volunteers. So, you know, really bringing forward whatever the sweet spot is in the way that your organization operates into this new virtual environment that we're in. And again, it's an opportunity to energize your mission. I mean, I don't think anybody was idling through, but this is certainly a time to really distinguish how your organization can shine in a time of distress and of uncertainty, but real clarity about where your organization is moving. And here again, you know, take this moment to embrace each other and your partners. Perhaps it's six feet away, a virtual hug, as we're doing a lot of these days, but, you know, your partners could be a fantastic solution to your organization. I know of one arts organization who has a wonderful partnership with a human service organization, and while they can't help them on the front line of delivering services, they are, they're loaning essentially their marketing team and their IT team to help bolster that organization. In another scenario, a corporate client of the Alfred Group has shared that they are really amping up their loan of executives to provide in-kind services to organizations. So whether that's finance or, you know, how you're processing things, you know, creating new structures to measure success. I mean, this is a time, think about all those partners, all those relationships that your organization has and how you can maximize those in this particular time. And then finally, the next slide is around interpersonal dynamics. And, you know, it's been interesting, I'll just share, the Alfred Group has a major office here in Chicago and another in Seattle. And as we all know, COVID-19 found its way to Seattle first before it came across the country. And while we were deeply concerned about and acutely aware of what was happening with our colleagues and clients in the Northwest region, it wasn't until two weeks later when we were starting to experience those things that we really understood it. So all of those factors, you know, create unique new realities that we need to be aware of and, again, embrace and also, you know, be very objective about. So we're obviously all working in a totally new, interactive workplace. You know, we're all learning new skills, like at a meeting this morning where there were 20 of us, we've learned to put our hands up if you want to say something rather than everybody speaking over each other. Certainly, listening with empathy, recognizing that some people are experiencing something very different in their world and with their family and in their work environment than others. Continue dynamic reporting, whether that's, you know, one-on-one check-ins with your, you know, with your team, the actual work of reporting what's been happening, even in some of the documentation that's coming out through SBA and the loans that are going out that nonprofits will be, are taking advantage of. One of the things that it says is that your employees need to be documenting what they're doing. So just making sure that you're following the best practices that you would if you were in the office, but applying them to a new virtual reality. And then finally, to be thankful and celebrate. I mean, you know, one of our clients got a $1 million gift in the middle of a campaign cabinet call last week, another just had a baby. This morning, we celebrated on our Alfred Group call, a colleague who's been with the firm for 31 years and another for two years. I mean, let's continue to stay connected and appreciate what we are as a team, even though we're not face-to-face anymore. And then finally, I would just share, you know, with the magnitude and speed of things that are happening in our current environment, we really need to be cognizant of the way that we are coping and the coping strategies that we all need to employ. I heard a wonderful speaker this weekend share, you know, "You need to cool off your brain." And Lord knows, there's been so many times when I've said, "Is it urgently?" I mean, there are so many times when I personally have reacted so strongly to something that just popped up and, you know, your mind goes crazy just thinking about where that's going. But taking 30 seconds to let your brain breathe, to physically breathe. So three cooling-off strategies that I think really resonated with me, that I heard a speaker share. Number one, unplug and anchor, let your brain settle, you know, take a breath. Teresa, you were sharing you went for a walk on this beautiful day, which I can't wait to get out and enjoy. Secondly, charge up, be sure that you're eating and sleeping well and exercising. And three, be of service, help others. I mean, it's a time where we really do want to reach out and be a part of one another's lives. So to bring this all together, it doesn't probably seem like a matrix that has a lot of Excel formulas in it is necessarily what would bring together leadership, healthy teams, and interpersonal strength, but truly it does because having a team, having clarity, understanding the scenarios that an organization might find themselves working through, and understanding how you're going to pivot and track is not only a way to get through this time where we are perhaps more together than we were when we were in offices next to each other because we're constantly sharing and updating, but by the same token, it's a way to see where we're going to the extent that we can in this day and age where things are changing so rapidly. But conversely, it's a way for you to document your emergency strategic plan so that you can go back in three to six months after we've moved beyond the other side of this current time and say, "What did we do right? What could we have done better? And what did we learn for the future?" So it's creating your emergency plan for a future situation. And perhaps many organizations have this in place, but just taking a quick look here at the matrix, Teresa, if you'd move forward. You see that, you know, this is small and probably hard to see, but here we have action steps and underneath that, what is the strategy? So within each strategy, action step 1, 2, 3, 4, this one is response in terms of immediate response and raising funds. The next one, cultivation, stewardship, again, a lot of great ideas have been shared about that. Another one, how we're pivoting, there's just, you can list however many strategies related to what you're doing as a full organization or within your department or within your team within your department. And then, you know, who's responsible for it? This progress indicator of, you know, green, yellow, white, white hasn't started, yellow, we're in progress, green, we're sailing, we're done, notes and next steps. And then, you know, what are the deadlines within? This one goes through August, maybe it's a, you know, 30, 60, 90-day deadline, completion date that you want. But I just encourage you to document this throughout your organization. You know, if you don't have the ability to share it beyond your team, then, you know, do it at least within your team so that you can celebrate and you can look back and say, you know, "What were the decisions that we made and how did we get there? And what might we have done differently as we were thinking about and approaching our work during this time?" So Doug, Kelsey, help give some additional thoughts about how we keep our organizations whole through this period?
Yeah, thanks so much, Sharon. I think it's really great. You know, I was talking to someone this morning, and, you know, it's often difficult to separate work from home when you're working from home, right? And so thinking about how, as teams or as leaders of teams, we can be good examples of that. And I think, you know, what you said about, you know, creating an interactive workplace that allows for people to be able to express where they're at and how they're doing, but also celebrate little milestones. I know at CCS, just internally for our firm, we send out a daily digest that is just celebrating the wins of the day. And it might be a client who received a gift or something that happened in someone's personal life, but it's great just to share those real time. And I think, you know, as we each are dancing in uncharted territory, for most of us, never having experienced anything like this before, being able to celebrate those little wins, at least for me, has been really helpful.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you both. And I think it's really important to think about, you know, how we care for each other and our team in addition to our donor audiences. So thanks for that. Sharon, I will say, just to add to what Doug is saying about, you know, being able to come together and share quick wins, this is just a silly thing, but someone at Campbell and Company the other day decided, "Wouldn't it be fun if we put together a collaborative Spotify playlist?" So we have this sort of growing Spotify playlist, and the rule is they all have to be happy songs, right? They have to be songs that, you know, make you feel upbeat. And it's been, you know, hilarious to do everything from seeing what people's musical tastes are to realizing that you still have your screen name from high school as your Spotify account. So that's just been a fun thing. The other thing that I'll say is, you know, this is a great time in addition to laying out plans for your immediate sort of emergency response efforts, to also be thinking about what projects were on the back burner that can now be taken care of. So, you know, whether that's a, maybe it's a database cleanup project, maybe it's a shared social media calendar between your marketing and development teams, maybe it's a weekly call list for your CEO, you know, whatever those projects are that you've been saying, "When we have time, we'll get..." are that you've been saying, when we have time, we'll get to them. You probably have time now. And that might also be a great way to, you know, let some of your team members and employees who have come in recently and had good new ideas to say, okay, take it and run with it. You know, this is, this is your time to try that out and let's be creative. Let's take some risks and see what we have space for. So thanks for all of these great tools.
I'll just share one other client story. We're working on a strategic plan with a global association. And we had just started the, the work with them maybe a month or six weeks ago. And then obviously the world changed pretty quickly. And, and so the leader of this organization said, should we stop? You know, should we, is this the time? And where we came around to is let's focus the strategic plan on the next 18 months so that this can be a real-time effort to help our organization make real-time decisions about how we're going to operate and the, and what we know about the future. And also be holding on to the, the strategies and the aspirations that we have, that we hope that we can do within the next three years. So we, you know, pivoted a bit and instead of a two-day in-person gathering to work through their strategic plan with the board, we're doing a three-hour Zoom workshop with their board and breaking into work groups through Zoom and have them come back and share their findings. So it's exciting to see the innovation and the ways that we're able to keep things moving so the organizations have the, the best resources that are utilizing the resources that they have to move forward. So Teresa, I think that completes our prepared thoughts.
So here, there we go. Hi. Okay. So I'm looking at our chat box and I don't currently see any questions, but please, if you have any to share with us, please go ahead and type up those questions. In the meantime, we do have some that were sent to us ahead of time. Of course, as someone who does event planning, I'm going to jump into a question about events. What are your thoughts on proceeding with plans for fall events? Before I let you all answer, I'm going to give my two cents about that. Look at your contracts first with your venues, especially, you know, especially living in Chicago, we have to book out venues a year, sometimes a year and a half in advance. Look at your contracts and see what kind of timing you have with that and what your flexibility is. If you've been working with certain venues or vendors over a long time, they know where you're coming from because they're in similar situations. So definitely be prepared to have those conversations with them. But also just have things like in the back burner, talk to your committees, talk to your chairs, just so that everyone's kind of on the same page and just keeping a, their fingers on the pulse of what's happening in the future. But I don't know if the three of you have any input on that.
Yeah, the one thing that I would just jump in, we received a couple of questions in advance about whether or not to go virtual for events or to postpone events. And I'd love to just briefly on the idea of going virtual to an event. We've seen a couple of our client partners go virtual. The caveat to that though, is that they've done virtual type events before, right? So if you are conducting, for example, this client partner that we're working with is a school and their school community is used to doing, I think it's Bid Pal or one of those online, giving plans, they're used to doing their auction online that way. So they were able to do the auction from Thursday to Saturday. Everyone still gathered virtually Saturday night as they would have if we weren't in COVID-19. There was an opportunity to do a paddle raise on Zoom and they made their goal, which is fantastic. There's another organization that I was speaking to recently that had never done anything like this and it was, they flopped because their community didn't know how to handle the online technology. And so my advice would be consider moving online if it's something that your constituency is comfortable with. Not all events are meant to be moved online. And so just take that into account when you are thinking about how you might want to plan to move forward.
I think that's really good advice, Doug. And, and I would add to it, I think there is more than one way to transform an event into a virtual fundraiser. And maybe we should be thinking, you know, beyond just what is a virtual event mean? I think our, our brains go immediately to, okay, we'll have an online auction and we'll, you know, broadcast live, a program participant talking or a CEO giving an update, something like that. So it's, you know, it's what we're all doing now, you know, doing something in person via video. But think about, you know, can you take that same type of gathering and that same fundraising opportunity? Maybe it turns into a crowdfunding campaign or maybe it turns into just an email campaign that makes great use of video and photos and testimonials. Maybe, you know, it's, you get a small group of people together, whether that's your board or your event committee, and, you know, you send them all wine baskets and you, you gather and then you talk about, okay, how do we get the message out to the, the peers and folks in our network that we were going to invite? So I think creativity is, is welcome here and it doesn't all have to, to look the same. But I absolutely agree that if you don't have the infrastructure in place already, you need to think long and hard about whether it will work.
So a couple of great suggestions from our clients that have, I thought, done some really clever ideas. One is with sponsors, asking them to obviously donate their sponsorship for the current activities of the organization or the survival of the organization because they're not able to earn revenue. For instance, an arts organization or even an educational. As a matter of fact, one educational organization, client raised $100,000 through a virtual paddle raise. And granted, that's close to charity. Those are people who are close to the organization and have, you know, a desire to ensure that their faculty and staff continue to be there and to, to serve their children. But another great idea I thought was to take the, to, to say to the sponsors and for that matter, table hosts, we, if you'd be willing to contribute your sponsorship, your table to our organization, we'd love the opportunity to host you for a private dinner or lunch, again, on the other side of this with our CEO, or perhaps it was a board member who helped to secure that donation. So, you know, finding, thinking about who the right people are to, to bring together with that sponsor is another great strategy that one of our clients is employing. And then third, the idea with sponsors is to say, rather than the impressions that you would have made through our event, we'd like to focus on you for one week in the next year or for, you know, and all of our social channels are a multimedia channel. So for a month or a week or whatever the right cadence is, that you have a special highlight on that sponsor. So there are other ways that in the future, you'll be able to bring visibility to those organizations, corporations, sponsors, individuals who have, who had planned to support you through your event.
There were just two questions. I saw one in the chat while we're still talking about events and then one that we received in advance. One regarding, should we plan to hold events in the fall? You know, I think we all wish we had a crystal ball to say that the world will be back to normal by May 1st. I don't, I don't, I don't know that it will be or that we can say that. But I think the, the key theme that I'm seeing from many of the partners that we're working with and just from doing my own, you know, research is that organizations are planning to move forward with events in the fall. But to Kelsey's point, they're maybe taking on a little bit of a different look. Maybe if your event is normally 2,000 people, you're paring it down because people won't want to gather in such large, large groups like that. So thinking about how, you know, you can think forward to the fall proactively, but maybe thinking about some alternative plans should gatherings of, of large groups, you know, might, might still be a situation. Matthew asked a question on the chat regarding a run scheduled for July. An organization that I volunteer for, that I am supposed to be doing a run with this, this May, has changed it to a virtual run. So it's still the opportunity for people to raise funds online, to still ask their friends, you know, to grassroots, you know, it's a grassroots initiative to ask them to support. But people are then running around their own neighborhoods. Kelsey's earlier point about Spotify, there's a playlist that has been created for everyone and there's a start and end time and people will be running at the same time together and then taking photos and sharing it. And so, you know, it's not the opportunity to gather everyone like you would have in terms of a, a traditional walk, run or ride, but they're still moving forward with that because running as of right now is still something that you can do while socially distancing.
Right. So I've been asked by multiple people to make sure we get to this question. If you are a one-person development team, what would you recommend focusing on during this time?
I'll jump in. Well, certainly, you know, donor communications has got to be the most important thing that you do. So, and it's not just one and done. I think, you know, a continuation of the right cadence of updates with your donors is the most important thing. But it's a great time for you to be able to do the kinds of things that you haven't had time to do. You know, some clients are using this to finally get all the actions and, and relationships into their database to, you know, this is a great time to clean up your database, to improve on the information that you have in it and to really think about your future and, you know, to pivot. It's a great time to connect actually, and people are more available. I'm finding that our clients are able to make connections with donors they weren't able to get a meeting with for two months. And, you know, in two days, you might have a 15-minute call. You know, just think of, think of this as an opportunity to really grow, even though there's a lot of uncertainty. There's so much that you can do to build your base.
Yeah, I would agree with Sharon. I think every day should be spent on the phone. You know, use, use your day, set aside an hour or two every day and call donors, prospective donors, use it as an opportunity to requalify people or to cultivate donors. And so that they feel that you were there for them during this time. And so that when they need, when you need them to be there for you, it's, it's an easier ask in a couple of months.
I agree with that. And, oh, sorry, I would just say, you know, you, you of course sort of start inside out, right? You want to get to your board members and your major donors. And, but also think about, you know, who, who are your mid-level donors who you haven't been spending time on, right? Who are those people who you think could probably be giving more to you, who are engaged in some way? And how much would it mean for them to get that same type of personal outreach at, at this time?
So a next question is Giving Central is organizing a global day of giving on May 5th to help nonprofits raise money at this time. Have you, any of you heard about it? What are your thoughts on participating in it? In this or other organizations? Or if there's anyone else in the chat, if you're participating in that giving day, your thoughts on that?
I'll, I'll jump in. This is a hot topic with, I know, a few of our clients right now. And, you know, we, we typically put out a toolkit around Giving Tuesday and do a lot of work with, with clients to prepare for that. And, you know, we, we generally recommend at least a three-month planning period before you hop into a giving day like this. So we're talking about less than a month to go. My advice is if you have a, a special fund or, you know, some type of emergency relief funding plan that has been developed around services you're providing right now, this is a great opportunity to plug that. So it's sort of, you know, here's the one fund, here's what we're doing with it, we're using this money immediately. I think there are perhaps some, some other examples too where you're an organization that isn't quote unquote, on the front line, but you have already sort of quantified special funding that you need to make it through this period. So an example, if you're a zoo or an aquarium and you, you need X amount of money to, you know, care for your living specimens right now while you're not bringing in earned revenue. That's another, that's another example. If you have that sort of discrete funding opportunity, this is a, is a great way to sort of get it out there. And otherwise, if you have other fundraising plans that are already in place, you might want to stick with those. It's just, it's not a lot of time to prepare.
Right. How do you overcome leadership fears of calling donors? Right now is a lot of good time to get that practice in.
Yeah, it is. And I think one of the best ways to do it is to have them join you on a call. You know, think, sit down in advance and say, you know, these are things that would be meaningful for this donor to hear from you. Take, take the ownership of getting the call going, pivoting to, you know, handing it off to your leader, helping to move forward the conversation. And at the end, say, hey, that was pretty good. You were really great and I love that you said that. You know, just sort of practice makes perfect. Make them, take the fear out of it by just bringing them into the conversation with you.
And I think the other thing that I would just add on, I agree with Sharon completely, is let them be a part of the list creation. So instead of giving them a list of people to, to reach out to, work with them to create a list of people that they're comfortable with and maybe give them their first 10 or 15 people. That would be, you know, easy wins for them as opposed to just giving them a list of random people.
Got it. Any other questions from our group? No? Okay. Well, I want to thank Kelsey, Doug and Sharon for your insight today. It's been great to work with you. A social shout out to the AFP staff for getting us online and going. Obviously for right now, AFP will be hosting our webinars online instead of in person. And, you know, we're hoping to be back in person on June 12th for our workshop series. But with everything going on, that's tentative. So we do have a workshop coming up May 15th, which will be virtual. We'll send that information out to you. Obviously we have our upcoming programs here, July 15th through 16th. We have Fundamentals of Fundraising. We'll start up with our breakfast workshop series. We have postponed our annual philanthropy awards to October 2nd. So we hope that you can join us there. So if you have any questions or anything else, my email, I'm going to go all the way back to the top of the webinar as VP of CLC unhappy. Please give me a shout. Any questions you might have about upcoming programs, things that you want to see in our upcoming programs. And we have a calendar already in place, but we're going to work around that and kind of see what needs to be altered so that we are being mindful of the ever-changing philanthropic world in our current time. My email is there. Even if you need to email somebody to vent about something because this is all frustrating time, give me a shout. I won't mind. But I do want to thank everyone for their time today. And if you can, get out.